Test, test, this is a test.
We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Commissioner McCaskill, Will Jones, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell. You're here by number five. A special call meeting of the Plaka City Commission has been called to be held on Monday, June 14th, 2021 at the Plaka City Hall, 201 North Second Street. The meeting is open to the public. The meeting is called to commence at 4:00 P.M. The agenda included may not be limited to acquisitions of the former roadside neighborhood community center in Jacob's Road with Delapine. Ward bid 2021-07. Second reading of orders 21-09, offering the existing sign. Second reading of orders 2021-06, annexed to 3201, 3203, Grille Avenue. First reading of orders is amendment 67417, amendment chapter 62, amendment chapter 94. Please govern yourselves accordingly. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order after the call. This is our June 14th, 2021 City of Plaka Commission meeting. At this time, we will have our pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Borum, and we will have our invocation by our chaplain, Pastor Alonzo Mulberry. Anyone please stand.
Pledge of allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, once again, we say thank you for your goodness and certainly for your mercy and your kindness. We ask God for your divine visitation and presence to be with us in this meeting on today. Guide the minds and hearts of each individual. God, you know where we are, you know who we are and what we need. Pray for the direction of this city, God, that you would guide us continually and carry us where you would have us to go. And we'll forever give you praise, glory, and honor for the great things that you're doing. Have your way now, in Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen and amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Taylor Hill.
Here.
Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
Rufus Borum.
Present.
Will Jones.
Here.
Justin Campbell.
Present.
All present and accounted for.
And we have a call. Next up is approval of minutes from May 27th, 2021. Has everyone had an opportunity to review minutes?
Motion to self minutes is written.
Second.
There's motion on the floor. In a second, is any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, a further recognition and presentations for proclamation for Pride Month, June 2021.
City of Plaka proclamation. Whereas the mayor and the city commission of the City of Plaka recognize and proclaim the month of June 2021 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month throughout the city. And whereas the City of Plaka joins the federal government and councilless municipalities across the state of Florida to observe Pride Month in honor of the history of the LGBTQ liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ people in this society. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have had a measurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. And whereas the City of Plaka is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to indiscrimination and prejudice. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has indefinite dignity and worth, and the mayor and the city commission call upon the people of this city to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere exists. Whereas celebrating the Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the City of Plaka's LGBTQ community and is a proper opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build exception, and advance equal rights. Now therefore, I, Taylor L. Hill, mayor of the City of Plaka, together with the members of the Plaka City Commission, hereby endorse and proclaim the month of June 2021 as Pride Month in support of LGBTQ community and urge our citizens to raise the rainbow flag during this month, recognizing all LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make the City of Plaka a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. And witness whereof, I am here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed this official seal of the City of Plaka this 14th day of June in the year of our Lord, 2021.
Someone.
Second.
Motion on the floor. In a second, is any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mast, are you here? Let's give your name and address for record.
Johnson Mast.
Let's give your city. City of residents.
East Plaka.
Got a couple of words you want to say for today?
Well, first of all, thank you to Mayor Hill and the City of Plaka, the city commissioners. In this historic moment, I think it's something that's long overdue, but it's never too late to do the right thing and recognize everybody in our diverse community. I think, you know, in 2021, there's no better time. And especially just a couple of days ago, when we remember the 49 people that lost their lives at Paul's nightclub in Orlando, there's no better time to accept this proclamation and really just recognize the shift in our society in Putnam County. And, you know, myself being the first openly gay candidate to run for office in Putnam County history in the 2020 election cycle, I think, shows a change and a shift in how people of Putnam County and the City of Plaka view LGBTQ plus people and moving to a place of acceptance and pride. So thank you very much.
We're going to present you with the proclamation at this time. And so again, congratulations and again, thank you for stepping forward and taking a courageous step. So appreciate you. Thank you. And so if I may, everybody's here for Pride Month, for the proclamation. Will you please stand at this time so we can recognize you? So again, we'll just give round applause. So again, thank you very much. Moving on to public, to our public comments, our public comments on the item five of the agenda. We're now open to four for public comments. Anyone here wishing to speak during public comment? There's a yellow speaker's card in the back of the room where Chief Shaw is standing. You can fill out that card and make sure you include your pertinent information, so we'll have it. Also, if you're on our virtual, if you're a virtual viewer, you can use the YouTube chat function or you can dial 386-329-0100, extension zero. It will now open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment at this time? Yes, ma'am, come on. And just keep your, when you come forward and speak, give your name and address so we have it for the record.
I just had to thank you for the vote. And a lot of people don't realize that the 1964 Civil Rights Act did not include members of the gay community. And that didn't happen until last year when a federal Supreme Court case was settled. So and that, the date of that is actually tomorrow. So it's great that this is, you know, right on the evening of that date.
Ma'am, I do apologize, your microphone's not on.
Smash the button right there. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
You can hear you definitely. Thank you.
You probably heard most of that anyway. I guess, did you hear me?
Go ahead and repeat it just so we can get everybody there.
Okay, so members of the gay community were not included in the 1964 Civil Rights Act. And they were only included last year, June 14th, 2020, when a Supreme Court case was settled and did include members of gay community. So this is our one-year anniversary of having federal protections. I lived my entire adult life under the threat of being fired from a job just because of who I am. Lots of my friends and loved ones lived that way too. And it's quite a shadow to live under. So it's a real relief to be able to speak freely. I'm self-employed, I'm not going to fire myself. But I'm happy for everybody that, you know, can't be fired just because of the way they are. And I really appreciate you voting for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? Are there any other speakers? Is there anything in our YouTube chat? Any comments from the commission?
Nothing at this time.
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment at this time. And again, thank you guys very much for being here. Moving on to our consent agenda items A through D. through D on the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have removed at this time?
Motion to itself, items A through D on the consent agenda.
There's a motion to approve. There's a second by Commissioner Campbell. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item seven of the agenda is our adopt, is the adopt resolution twenty twenty one R sixty-nine, acquisition of the former Northside Neighborhoods Facility Center, Jenkins Middle School Gymnasium. Can you read the caption for it?
Resolution number twenty twenty one, ours, uh, sixty-nine, a resolution of the City of Palaca authorizing the execution of documents for the purpose of the city's acquisition of the ownership of the former Northside Neighborhood Committee Center, now known as the Jenkins Middle School Gymnasium.
Someone.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're gonna open the floor for discussion at this time. Are there any questions from the commission or any presentations at this time?
For the Jenkins Middle School?
Yes.
Well, ba- basically, only, uh, only thing I had was, I think, um, there was a report that was sent in as it relates to some of the, I guess, the findings or, um, and when they went out and did a high-level, I guess, investigation of the structure, um, different things of that nature. Just wanna kind of understand and know what those numbers would look like. If we had to bring a number of those things up to code and, um, ADA compliance, uh, some of the, the report also mentioned something about the asbestos. It could have asbestos, so. And some of the other things with the ceiling tiles, the roof, um, all of those various things, some of the bathrooms. So just looking at the overall cost of how we would bring things up before this, this center could be used, because I don't think we would be able to just, uh, if we, if we took it over, that we could just go in and begin to use it right away without some, some costs associated, so. Uh, I don't know who can speak to.
We can. I'll, I'll, I'll close off with my presentation once we finish, and I'll let, uh, both Ms. Shank and Mr. Holmes, if they have anything, go, go forward.
As an introduction, Mr. Mayor, I should, um, understand that staff understands that it's not staff's job to determine whether or not to go forward. Um, it's, that's a policy decision for the commission to make. So we're not advocating for or against, we're simply, um, wanna make certain that we put certain things in front of you, the, the financial, um, aspects or certain of the financial aspects of this, understanding that a lot of the financial aspects of this, we can't predict with certainty. But there are some things that we wanted to put in front of you, uh, in terms of obligations that are looming or that we're, we're anticipating having, and then, um, the, uh, the issue of, of maintenance and so forth of the gymnasium itself. As I said, there are a lot of unknowns for that, that we haven't tried to anticipate, but with that in mind and understanding the context, Ms. Shank has put together a little bit of information for you.
Okay, so my presentation is exactly that. It is a budget update. I took the information that I had readily available and kind of put it in a little PowerPoint for you. Um, sorry, Sunny, I didn't grab, grab the clicker. So the first thing I wanted to touch on was current obligations that the commission is aware of. The first one is our salary study, um, because we are having to phase in the approach to meet the fifteen-dollar minimum wage increase by fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Right now, there is an RFP out on the market, but at this time, we don't know the impact, um, of what that would be across all of the funds. The second thing we have coming up is our property and liability insurance increase. The coverage, um, was not sufficient, and at this time, we are actually going over all of our city-owned assets to make sure that we have, um, the correct coverage. So once again, that's another one that that is an unknown impact at this time. Eight hundred megahertz radios, that is something that we all have been in, um, the know about for quite a few years, but we are in the last year that we have got to get it done. Based on the estimates that we have been given by the county, because Motorola does not have final numbers at this time, we're estimating five hundred and twenty-one thousand as a one-time cost. We do not know if there are any ongoing costs that come along with that, so they have not been identified. We also have the water taxi storage and operations that we should be accepting soon. At this time, we don't have numbers on that either. The river center either needs a new roof or repair, that is estimated fifteen to seventy-eight thousand dollars. Community affairs annex roof, forty-eight to seventy-eight thousand dollars. And then we also need to take a look at our current facilities that we are not including maintenance on. Right now, it's about a dollar per square foot that, um, we anticipate on facilities. But I just want you to keep in mind that right now, that's not something that's built into your budget currently. So when taking a look at the Jenkins Gymnasium, one thing I wanna note is that it is just for the gymnasium. So for the acquisition, um, they can be considered imminent costs because these are things that we would have to do right upfront. So insurance for the remainder of the year, um, as you can see, I've broken it out between this fiscal year, next fiscal year, and what the monthly cost would be. So you've got insurance, electricity, and maintenance. So the first thing that has an asterisk is your electricity. We were provided the FPL bills, and per FPL, we are expecting a nine percent increase bill projection that was actually given to us by FPO. And then the dollar square foot average maintenance cost, um, is gonna be the second asterisk that you see there. And then I've also put on there the fire alarm and sprinklers. We have an estimate of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, that is dependent on the use of the building. Potentially, that is something that we might have to bring up to code. So that could be an imminent cost that we would have to pay upfront.
If I could just mention that the maintenance is an industry standard at a dollar square foot. That's not intended to be an accurate estimate of the maintenance on this building. It's industry standard. And as Ms. Shank indicated, the fire alarm and sprinklers, there's some uncertainty about whether or not we would, we would be required to do that. There's that, that's, uh, gonna be depended upon some interpretations of the code. May not have to, but it's something that we wanted to.
Right. That I wanted to put on the record that should we have to go that route, at least you were aware of it. We can go to the next one, Sunny. So foreseeable capital repairs, based on the report that came back that Mr. Holmes forwarded to you, there were the, things that kind of stuck out to me, um, among many. But the electrical system, mechanical system, water equipment and piping, um, the communication equipment, exterior repairs of the brick in multiple areas, areas potentially needing major repair, as well as a roof replacement on that building. And then, of course, you have the HVAC units that are mounted on the roof that would need to be replaced as well. All of those are foreseeable. So in the report, it actually said in a few years, so that's something that you would also wanna consider. And once again, this is just on the gymnasium. When we talk about funding sources, I think it's very important to think about what can pay for these buildings. So general fund, um, at the beginning of this fiscal year, it did have a reserve of three point three million. This building is not eligible for the American Rescue Plan funding that we're gonna be receiving. And grants are not likely. Um, if they are found, they would require a large match. Um, they're very limited. As far as HMGP and hardening, those are only in declared disasters. So the last disaster we had was Irma. So you would have to have another hurricane, um, to get mitigation funds like that.
Unlikely in Florida.
And then the next one, I just wanted to put up the eight hundred megahertz. That is a very shell-shocking number. I know that we have all discussed it, but based on the needs of Chief Taylor and Chief Shaw, that they provided us with portables versus mobile, and also the unit cost that we were given, that is where the five hundred and twenty-one thousand estimate came in. And keep in mind, that is a one-time expense. Um, if we do go to reserves, I will say generally, you want it to be for a one-time purchase. You wouldn't want it to be ongoing expenses. That's something that you would need an additional revenue stream for. Do you have any questions?
Water radios. Wouldn't we be able to use the disaster relief fund money for that?
We will not.
No?
It is very limited on what we can use it for, so.
When, when are we gonna go over those, uh, those funds and how we're gonna get them used? When we're gonna have that, um, dialogue?
I would be inclined to do a workshop.
It'll be probably best served during the budget workshop, the first budget workshop, to start to talk about what the, uh, what the plan's gonna be as it relates to those items. That probably makes the most sense to have some additional time to make sure we deal specifically with those things as we start to do our projections for the following year.
Yes. And I've actually put out conversations on Florida Government Officers Association, as well as we've been following, um, the League of Cities on what other cities are doing with their funding, um, just to make sure that we are maximizing the funds as much as we can for allowable uses.
The, the American Recovery Funds?
Yes.
Yeah, we've, uh, we've also done the same thing with the Florida League of Mayors too.
Yeah.
Just making sure that we can see what, what new trends are spending on. As I understand it, um, those funds are already set aside for those radios, right? Because we saw that coming up?
No.
They haven't.
They were not. Now, we did, um, do some last pitch efforts on trying to get some grants, but at this time, they have been unsuccessful.
Right now, uh, we're being told that we're looking at about a fifteen-month deadline. The, because when the county switches over, we'll have no choice. And there, we're being told that they're gonna make the switch in about fifteen months. So, uh, you know, things happen, things change, but as of right now, that's where we're, where we are with that.
The, um, I, I do know, I don't know if y'all reached out or made any connection with Cat, Cat, Kamek, um, Camp, um, Cameron. Uh, but anyways, she's old, she chairs the committee. She's a senior ranking person for, um, the emergency, uh, equipment. So she was pretty committed to the, to the county. She understood where our needs were. We, um, had a, um, a conference, um, with the school district, city, and, um, and there was, I think there was, you, the mayor was on, but we, between the school district and the city, and so I'm, I'm sure that there's, there's an avenue for us, for funding.
She actually came back, she came to City Hall and met with us as well, and we discussed the same subject there. Um, I think the reason they're running, they're showing the numbers is so that we understand the reality, even if, in case, worst-case scenario.
And that's exactly true. We're just worst-case scenarios.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, you know, I just wanna put it out there. Once again, my job is to solely inform you of your current obligations and make sure that you're aware.
Right. And that's, and that's really good, because if we have to go that route, we would just have to go that route. I mean, we can, can, just the bottom of that, um, from a compliance standpoint. So, um, but then if we had to go that route, then we could still pursue funding, um, um, the federal government. State, no, I'm sorry, state, who's state?
I don't believe so. I, I think at this time, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I feel like Cat didn't seem.
On the appropriation.
Yeah.
It didn't look like it was gonna come this cycle. The, the only good part of the fifteen-month lag is that it gives you another budget year.
Correct.
That you just, you can seek the funding, and it becomes, I think, more imperative at that point and more realistic.
Right.
But it's, it's a position that I think many people throughout the country, meaning communities, smaller communities particularly, around the country are, are in the same position from as it relates to the electronic infrastructure. And the fed, the federal government's gonna have to do something at some point to actually provide some levels of relief, but it's probably a conversation longer than we got today, for sure. Any other questions for Ms. Shank? Anything else, Mr. Holmes? I've got a quick, I, I, I jotted down some ideas. I've got a quick PowerPoint just to kind of give, um, some ideas, um, and even, and also some future opportunities. And so I entitled this the Palaca Central Academy Northside Neighborhood Facility Center. Um, there's an opportunity with this facility center, um, to be able to preserve the history of both Palaca Central Academy as well as Robert H Jenkins. By naming the gymnasium after him and the facility after the school, which once housed, which was once the home of the first accredited black high school and also the home of Collier Blocker Junior College. It's a twenty-eight thousand square foot facility, which includes gymnasium, a locker room, um, various multipurpose rooms, a band room, um, and twenty-seven classrooms and offices. Um, the sketch that you see is kind of a layout of what the facility looks like. Um, uh, there's a few of us in here who actually went to Jenkins Middle School, um, who are very familiar with the facility. This facility once housed, um, probably two to three hundred youth per day, as well as the RCMA daycare, which had additional kids and also seniors who were in there. It was the hub of community life, um, for the community as a whole. Next slide, please. So in the nineteen sixties, for five hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, roughly, there was a partnership between the housing authority, the City of Palaca, and Putnam County School District. At that time, the housing authority was up under the city, but for purposes of the HUD grant that they received, the HUD funding, to build the facility, um, they all applied in partnership. And on April twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-four, the property was transferred to the school district, um, with the request that it wants, that it be used, um, to maintain, that there'd be consideration to maintain programs, um, that existed for the community. Well, a lot of that didn't happen. Kids were basically put in a position, um, where those programs didn't exist in the same manner. The after-school basketball, open play, gymnasium changed. Young kids were no longer able to come out and use the track in the same manner for after-school programming. Um, there were a lot of considerations that went into place for that. RCMA, um, subsequently had its own facility. And the uses changed. When the uses changed, we started to see increases in crime. We started to see increases in violence and teen pregnancy, um, and in poverty within the community as a whole, because the hub and the haven for the community was no longer there. Next slide. This facility also was used, um, in the same way as the Price Martin Center. If you look at the lower, um, picture, you'll see the mo- part of the multipurpose room, which was twice as big as that, which was once used for functions called record hops on, um, Friday and Saturday, which probably had, Mr. Jones, you're a lot older than me, so Commissioner Jones, but what we say, four hundred kids on the average in there? So at least three to four hundred teenagers. Every Friday and Saturday, we're inside there doing, um, for dances inside the facility, recreational activities, youth dances, basketball, uh, business incubator, something that we talked about. Twenty-eight thousand square foot facility gives us an opportunity to look at one of our major priorities. There are lease opportunities with twenty-seven offices available, um, to be able to bring other community organizations in to serve. Uh, city administrative offices can break, be put into that building as well as senior activities. Um, the best example of what happens with the governmental facility is probably what the city of Orlando's doing with their Grand, Grand Avenue Elementary School, which gives you an opportunity to see, um, them taking an old school, which was once closed, which is the hub of a community, uh, and making it a campus and a city center for the entire school, uh, meant for the entire city, and it provided pottery services, a kid's zone, uh, senior services, community services, everything, all encompassing within one place so that citizens could be served in a greater capacity and it created urban sprawl. And there's a potential to look at our, our organizations that have dollar leases, uh, which may not be accessible for the entire community, be able to bring those organizations into a facility where people can now do crafts and do arts and do things of those natures, and at the same time, put them in a position where, um, their lease may not be a dollar, but it'll be an opportunity for them to be able to do something that may be slightly less than market rate, which will give them the ability to serve, uh, a greater capacity on a campus site, um, which also includes significant space as well. Next slide. Our budgetary concerns of what we just talked about, uh, roof, AC, cleaning services, um, maintenance of the current facility, gym floor refinishing. The suggestion is to create the five-year capital improvement plan that will address the needs of the current facility. Uh, the utility bills, uh, which average fourteen, six- Uh, the utility bills, uh, which average fourteen sixty-five, seventy-three over thirteen month period, excuse the typo, ranges anywhere from seven hundred and ninety dollars to twenty-eight hundred and eighty dollars. Interestingly, the summer months, when the school wasn't occupied, were the months that had the highest bills. But the school district also took that facility and converted all the lighting over to LED. Next, next slide. There are significant grant opportunities that exist inside of this school. Uh, those include, but are not limited to Century Twenty-One After-School Grant Programs. Commissioner Campbell knows a lot about that, um, and just the opportunities for us to be able to provide those grant programs, um, within the community to serve, um, individuals that come in there. Uh, crime prevention grants, Chief Shaw, um, something we've looked at historically, uh, with DJJ and the Department of Justice, opportunities that we've had and we've used in the past with the Weeden Seat Center, uh, as well as with various PAL programs. There are opportunities to help the homeless, as well as have health grants and other funding in place through the department, through the Florida Department of Health. Health and wellness grants will become, uh, significant, and programming will be significant as we look at this facility. There's a variety of USDA grants that are, that are available for rural communities, uh, as well as being able to provide housing assistance and some of the other things that we've seen through our partnerships with Wealth Watchers, as well as HUD funding, uh, that's available for those same opportunities. You've got educational STEM grants from local facilities, as well as through the Department of Education, um, to be able to come in and do some things, within the, for this, for the community as a whole. There's those FERTAP state recreation grants. Florida Sports Foundation also has funding. Tourist Development Council, the Business Incubator, from a federal funding standpoint, uh, and also for business creation, you can use the Department of Economic Opportunity. Uh, and also there's some funding potentially that's coming down now, about thirty million dollars, at a half million dollar matching funds, uh, for preservation of African-American culture. Those type funds could be used, once they're disseminated, could be used to deal with some of the projected costs that were, we talked about with Ms. Shanks, as it relates to what's in place. The money has been, um, mentioned, and it's been talked about very heavily, but it just hasn't been distributed to the state level at this point for dissemination. The information that we've gotten from some very credible sources is that those grants are gonna be coming down fairly quickly. And so there are opportunities for funding there. And in closing, um, Jenkins Middle School was the home of Collier Blocker Junior College. It was a great opportunity for us all within the community. It creates, um, urban sprawl. It creates a, a growing, a growing invitation to everything that's there. Uh, we talked about, um, this facility from the standpoint of what it could be overall. There's also a greater opportunity with the entire campus being abandoned, to look at that as well, um, for our public works facility, because the existing library facility, for example, is almost exactly what was diagrammed by, uh, Mr. Griffith for his public works facility. There's various acreage of, of property, there's a significant amount of acreage on that property that could be used as a total campus for us to come in and really do something all encompassing. I think the long-term plan, uh, if it included looking at that campus as a way for us to, to do something all encompassing, could save us millions of dollars. I've had that conversation with the city manager, as well as with the finance director, and also with general services and council, about where we could be numerically taking the facility as a whole, and what it could save us, as we started to have concerns about those three point four million dollars that Commissioner Borum talked about, um, during the last meeting. And I've basically, um, indicated to the school district, um, that we would love to explore numbers just to see what was there, because we've explored options all over the city for building new facilities, and we would just love to do that, and with the permission of the commission, that's something that could also be done. And so those are things that are out there. I think this gymnasium is the first step of many for us recouping and revitalizing communities. Um, when we talk about the communities that most need services and help, Jenkins Middle School is in the heart of it. That gymnasium has been a core piece of life in the community. That twenty-eight thousand square foot building has a replacement cost on the tax rolls at three point four million, and probably costs more, around five point one million, according to the architects who looked at this facility. And so when we talk a few hundred thousand dollars over a few years to get this facility up to code, that's far greater than spending three point four million dollars or five million dollars to do something else. The other part of it is, when we walked in here as a commission many years ago, we were spending three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars a year on a golf course that would never give us the return that we're gonna get on this facility. And I don't care how many rounds of golf you play, and there are a lot of golfers, um, who love the game. There are some values that you can't get when you're building people. And it doesn't come in dollars and cents. It comes by way of, if you recall, it's a service, comes by way of getting young people in place who have a greater quality of life and who have more hope. And so those things don't reach your budget in the same way, because you can't put a number on something that's priceless. And so what I encourage the commission to do today is just to look at all the values as a whole, to be conscious of what the repair cost would be, but also to understand that it's a lot easier to spend half million dollars to make a building like new, as opposed to spending another half million dollars to get more police officers and to create more programming to deal with broken people. And so that's my presentation for today. Any questions?
Well, man, just gotta, uh, just a comment on that, on the golf course. That was something that the commission inherited coming in, and, um,
Agreed.
By far, that was, uh, nothing that I was pushing. In fact, um, I was more so looking at pushing and, and, and going away with the golf course because of the costs and the financial burden on the city. So we did come up with the solution in terms of, um, with a private, um, public-private partnership. And so we did get that, and so that put the city in a much better position, and I think everybody here, uh, supported that. I'm a hundred percent on board with, uh, Jenkins facility and what we, the potential, what, what it has to offer for the city, and what we can do with it, because again, it is a neighborhood facility. My only concern was the fact that the, the, the cost associated and how, how, how soon could we get the funding to do what we need to do to get the facility, uh, in a usable state? And that's, that's my only concern, um, in addition to maybe some of the other, um, things that was, that some of the other findings, that, those are my only concerns, but in terms of, uh, taking over that facility and being able to utilize it for the community, because it, it, it sits right in the heart of the community and, and is accessible for the people who, I mean, the, the, the community that need to serve. Um, the, the other piece of it is, I mean, it can serve a greater need in terms of homelessness. And, um, that's a big, uh, another big key piece. We have a, a great deal of homelessness and affordable housing. Now, in terms of the twenty-eight thousand square feet, uh, that we'll be getting, um, do we have the option, like you mentioned, Mayor, to, uh, possibly get those other, the other sections of, of the, of the building, so that we can do a greater thing for the community in terms of our homeless, uh, homeless problem that we have? Because we, we, you know, at one point, I thought PHA had specific units set aside, I think, a, a couple, supposed to have been like a couple of units, but I don't think that's available in terms of for, for, um, handling our homeless, um, people.
In answer to your question, the district has indicated they're gonna put the school on the market, and they've ordered an appraisal of the value of the school. They put the other schools on the market. And so I think the superintendent has been given some authority as to how he negotiates as it relates upon what comes back from those, but ultimately, the school board itself will make whatever decisions necessary, uh, to release of the, the entire school.
Okay, so that's the other pe, that other piece that would be for greater, greater need for the city, okay?
Right, that would be, and so the district is prepared based upon, uh, how the school, how this commission votes today to actually pass a resolution tomorrow, which would, um, turn over ownership of that building back to the city on the first of July. Even as we talk about, let's just say, we needed to go in and put a sprinkler system in with the reserves that we have anticipated, it wouldn't, and lapse money that we have from positions that were not filled from the general fund, the resources are available to be able to start to move towards those things. The other piece of it is, we're really close to the end of this fiscal year, which creates an opportunity to even do things from the, from the, from the, from the following fiscal year, from a budgeting standpoint, if we had to do certain repairs.
Right.
Uh, I think the, the most prevalent would be the determination of whether we've got to put a sprinkler system in. The second most prevalent's gonna be your long-term repair of the roof, which creates, which gets rid of a lot of headaches, and then maybe AC would be third from there.
Right.
Uh, those are the things that we have in place.
And my final, my final point, but, um, with some of the other facilities, like the annexed building, Price Martin, and some of the other ones, in terms of, well, we, we'll be taking on another, um, building for expense, um, will we be considering shedding some of those other facilities? You know, in terms of, and if we're gonna be able to use that and, or staff and, and commission, whoever, maybe can utilize that, um, particular building and, and shed some of the other buildings that we currently have.
Definitely from revenue standpoint, it'd be a suggestion that I would make, but I think overall, it's gonna be a determination that the commission, as a whole, because I, I, I think, um, gaining the facility allows, uh, Mr. Cutright, maybe even code enforcement to go immediately into that facility from an office standpoint, and be able to provide services in the same manner as the school does from the educational standpoint. And it eliminates, um, some of the things that we're dealing with. They're patching roofs and doing other things now, and we've patched until we can't patch anymore. And so we're at a point where forty years of patching has got us to a point where we gotta start replacing some of this stuff, or we gotta start giving it to other, or selling it to other folks, leasing it to them, so that they can actually make the higher and greater use of the property. And so those are the things we have to look at.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And it's to Commissioner Born. I agree with the vast majority of the things that he stated, but, um, I don't think there would be, or is there a reason why we, once we take, or when we take, or if we take, the ownership, that we would not be able to go in and start using the facility immediately? I mean, currently, it was used for school, um, it was used for students. My program, actually, that I ran, was housed out of that multipurpose room and the gym in total, so I don't think it would slow us down, um, if we were to assume that responsibility, that we cannot open it up immediately for the community, right?
I think part of it boils down to determinations that are made by the building official and the fire chief, fire marshal, as it relates to certain uses. If we're using it, we can start out immediately, I think, without question, use it as an educational facility. I think the other, if we change some uses, depending on what the determinations are from law, then there may be some, there may be some need to, to upgrade certain pieces of it, but I think those are all things that are gonna be based upon what the described use of the property is.
Yes, that was in the write-up. I mean, it's not something that, I mean, I, I just kinda read through, uh, the items of, uh, concern, and those were the things that were brought back from the engineering firm, so, um, it's not something that I just made up.
If I could, Commissioner, um, the, the mayor is exactly correct. We, uh, had some conversations, and that decision he's referencing would not be made by us. It probably is gonna come down to the county making the decision, chief building officer, but if it's determined that our acquisition of the building triggers the need to update the fire sprinkler system, then you'd have that cost up front. Um, and there's some, some of the utilities are apparently connected to the remainder of the, of this, of the school campus, based upon Mr. Griffith's assessment, that wasn't mentioned in the report, but he advised me that it appears there would be some electrical, probably a disconnect required, um, before you could resume, resume u, use of the building.
As well as transfer the solar panels that are in the front of the, from the gymnasium, transferring those so they could be used on the gym and not on the kitchen, like cafeteria area.
And then the only other unknown is making sure that our insurance company would sign off on whatever it is we do, we're gonna use it for. We got a quote on the insurance, but, uh, I mean, I think that was just a preliminary quote, so we obviously have to have insurance on the building, liability and so forth.
And it's not uncommon for a city to own a gymnasium, so.
Right.
Or a community center, so. Any other questions or comments from the commission? If not, I'm gonna open the floor for. I'm gonna open the floor for public comment at this time. Is there, are there any, is there anyone to fill out public comment cards on this item? Is there anything in the YouTube chat?
Not at this time.
Do we have any callers on the line? Seeing that, we'll close the public comment at this time. Any further discussions from the commission?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So Neighborhood Facility Center is coming back home.
Mr. Mayor, are you going to seek authorization to pursue those conversations regarding the remainder of the campus?
I will, I, I will. Is there, at this time, with the commission, which commission's pleasure on that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, um, for the mayor to pursue the remainder of the, um, Jenkins, um, facility buildings, with the school district.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and I will report back to the commission as to what we've found out. As we take, as we get an opportunity to take back the Northside Neighborhood Facility Center, it's always good to see a former mayor in the room. And so Mr. Smith, would you stand for us? We recognize you.
Mayor, it, it all, also can be used as a storm shelter.
Yes. So I, I think the last time the Northside Neighborhood Facility Center was owned by the city was under your leadership. And so, uh, it's good to have you here today. Moving the agenda to item number eight, which is our public hearing, annexing thirty-two oh one and thirty-two oh three Curl Avenue. Please, second reading.
Ordinance number twenty-one dash oh six, an ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as thirty-two oh one Curl Avenue, part of southeast quarter block one eighty-three, page five sixty-eight, X, official records book two sixty-four, page five sixty-six RD, and thirty-two oh three Curl Avenue, part of northeast quarter, the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter, of book one sixty-eight, page four thirty, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaca, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
So move.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second. Now, before the public hearings, is there anyone here for public hearing? You can use your YouTube chat or dial three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero, or you can fill out a yellow speaker's card. Is anyone here for public hearing? Is there anything in the YouTube chat? Seeing nothing, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission on annexation ordinance? Seeing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, rezoning ordinance, twenty-one dash zero eight.
Ordinance twenty-one dash eight, an ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Palaca, Florida, be amended from Putnam County Commercial Retail C two to the city of Palaca Commercial Intensive C two for the following properties. Thirty-two oh one Curl Avenue, part of the southeast quarter, book one eighty-three, page five sixty-eight, um, official record books two sixty-four, page five sixty-six RD, and thirty-two oh three Curl Avenue, part of the northeast quarter, the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter, book one sixty-eight, page four thirty, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing for severability, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
So move.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner McCaskill, second by Commissioner Jones. Now, before the public hearing, same directions, three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero, the YouTube chat function, or you can fill out a speaker's card. Is there anything in the YouTube chat?
There's nothing at this time, Mayor.
Close public hearing. Any further discussion from the commission?
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, the ordinance twenty-one dash zero nine, amending municipal code, chapter sixty-two.
An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, amending the municipal code by amending chapter sixty-two signs, by adding a section sixty-two eighteen, dealing with the change of face of an existing sign, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, providing for conflict with other ordinances, and providing for severability.
So move.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Borum, second by Commissioner McCaskill. Open the floor for public hearing, three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero, YouTube chat or yellow speaker's card. Is there anything in the YouTube chat?
Not at this time.
Close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission? This is for adoption. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, the ordinance twenty-one dash sixteen, amending chapters twenty-seven, I'm sorry, chapter seventy-four subdivision.
An ordinance of the city of. An ordinance of the city of Palacca, Florida, amending the municipal code by amending chapter seventy-four subdivisions by adding section seventy-four seventeen F and seventy-four seventeen G, lot splits, providing for conflict, providing for an effective date, providing for severability, providing for correction of scrivener's errors.
So move.
Second. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner McCaskill, second by Commissioner Campbell. We're now before for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Phone ringing, so maybe we got somebody here for public hearing. You can also use the YouTube chat function. Is there anything, Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Got a caller?
Hold on. One more name.
Caller, you're on. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is Aligha Kitchens, ten twenty-seventh South Twelfth Street, Palacca, Florida. Mayor, I'd like to propose that you all table this a lot split ordinance. There's a couple of issues with it which need to be looked at by staff closer, uh, including putting some extraordinary uh, expense on individual citizens, requiring surveys of recorded subdivision lots and recording new deed and having new deeds be recorded from the owner to himself. Uh, I think this needs to be looked at a little bit further and also the issue of combining lots is bigger than the issue of lot splits.
Okay, it can be addressed at the second hearing as well, right?
Alrighty, great. I'll, I'll get with you personally then.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, since we don't have a planning director here, this was added because currently we have no simplified provision for splitting lots. The only thing we have is a subdivision ordinance, which is cumbersome and expensive. So we added this in an effort to allow people to split lots without going through a full subdivision process. Uh, this is not unlike what the county has, um, and basically requires that the ultimate result, the split lots can form with density and other applicable standards and that you have lots of adequate size and so forth. It was intended to be a simplified process.
Simplified based upon what we saw as, as, as an impediment from before.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Thanks again, Ms. Kitchen.
Alright, thank you, Mayor.
Is there anything? Is there anyone?
I got it.
Is there anyone else in the YouTube chat or we don't have any more callers?
Not at this time.
We'll close public hearing at this time. Any further discussion from the commission?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, ordinance twenty-two one dash sixteen, amending, I'm sorry, twenty-two one seventeen, amending chapter sixty-two.
Thank you. An ordinance amending chapter sixty-two by adding a section sixty-two, um, providing, I'm sorry, sixty-two eighteen, providing for off-premise signs for business uses in the downtown riverfront D R district and the downtown business district, providing for conflict, providing uh, for conflict with other ordinances, providing an effective date, providing for severability and providing for scrivener's errors.
So move.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now before for public hearing, same directions. Three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero, the yellow speaker's card or you, the YouTube chat.
Mr. Mayor, if I could explain again, in the absence of a planning director, I was contacted by a business owner who indicated that he had a business located on St. John's Avenue. He had made an arrangement to advertise his business on Reed Street, uh, in an existing sign site that was not being used by the owner of the property. He was unable to do it. I advised him he could not do it because our ordinance prohibited that, uh, with our desire to try to attract businesses to St. John's Avenue, which we have, that, that interest and sentiment has been expressed over the years. I asked Mr. uh, Salmon's, uh, if he would look at the prospect and see if he could find there any philosophical or theoretical reason that that would be a bad idea. He couldn't. This is the resulting order. You see it limits the size of the sign, limits the location being within a quarter mile of the site that it's being advertised. It has safeguards in it that um, would uh, we believe uh, make it feasible to have, to allow people to advertise on Reed Street to advertise uh, the uh, St. John's corridor.
Excluding billboards.
Oh, no billboards. Fifteen square foot, I think, is the total size, area of the side. Yeah, fifteen square feet is the total. So that's less than four by four.
Thank you. Is there anything in YouTube chat?
Not at this time.
Close public hearing. Any discussion from the commission?
No, sir. If you look, uh, sub D indicates the off-premise sign shall not be electric unless the electric sign is for a business on the same premises of the sign, but can change copy to advertise the business you said the D R D B zoning classification, so long as it meets requirements of sixty-two seventeen. We already have a electric sign ordinance, so this would not change the requirements or the prohibitions of that electric sign ordinance.
That's my point. So you could have a, a sign there that's not electric yet now, so we're four or five in a certain area. And then now they can turn it to the right.
You can't, you can't have electric signs there. It's, it's prohibited. Ms. Fuller, is that call for us? Any further comments from the commission?
No.
Seeing none, questions called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, ordinance twenty-two one dash eighteen, amending chapter ninety-four, first reading.
An ordinance amending uh, chapter ninety-four of the city of Palacca Land Development Code, section one two, by adding the definition of a tattoo parlor, sections ninety-four, one sixty-two E, by adding fourteen tattoo parlors, and ninety-four, one forty-eight E, by adding section twenty-one tattoo parlors as conditional uses, providing for conflict with other ordinances, providing for an effective date, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors.
So move.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Bourne. There is a second by Commissioner Campbell. Open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing?
If I could explain, right now our code does not provide for tattoo parlors. As the commission is aware, um, any lawful use in the state of Florida is presumed to have a place in a zoning code or in a zoning regulation. Uh, we had a, a business that wanted to establish uh, in the downtown business district. We uh, looked at our code, tried to figure out where we thought uh, tattoo parlors would best fit. And uh, this ordinance is the result. It is by conditional use, um, which means that you know that the, the zoning board of adjustment would have the opportunity to weigh in on any particular safeguards that were necessary. It is in the downtown business, not the riverfront, so it would not be in the first four blocks of St. John's Avenue. Uh, it would be in the uh, further west and uh, but this is the result. The number of tattoo parlors? No, sir. Not as, not if they could, not if they can meet zoning. You normally have a hard time legally in establishing quotas. I don't mean that. Seriously, if you want to dress it out. I can help myself too. Watch this. I'll be the main sign. Have the right main sign and the ability.
Hey, let's get a vote on that. Is he going to be quiet? Go ahead, council.
You generally have a hard time establishing. Well, he told me to go ahead.
City council. That was city council. Go ahead, Mr. Holmes. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
You generally, you generally have a hard time establishing a quota on legal uses. You do have the opportunity to establish a quota by basically limiting the locations where they could locate, i.e. by, as we have with the adult entertainment ordinance and also to some extent with the internet cafe ordinance. You can, you know, place restrictions on what zoning category, you can place distance requirements from other uses. And the end result is to establish cones within which they'd be allowed. And by def, by, by, I guess you back into the issue of a quota. But you can't like put a quota and say no more than three businesses because that's considered to be inappropriate.
Time placement.
Did I say things you disagree with? That time, I mean.
Any further discussion from the commission? Questions called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Let the record reflect that Mr. Holmes's name tags as city manager and Ms. Thomas's says city attorney this time. So when I refer to council in this form, it's, you're excused.
Sunny, just turn my mic off when he asks for counsel.
Listen, it's habits are hard to break. So.
They are.
So, moving forward with the agenda, we were almost on time. City manager comments. That's you, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, sir. The only thing that I have is uh, we've been, as you know, dealing with the issue of surplus property for some time. Issue meaning what to do with it. Uh, now, as you're probably aware, we're getting an increased uh, interest in um, lots for building. We've had the interest expressed by a couple of different people who ask about buying some of our surplus property because of the fact that it is municipal property. We felt the best way to move forward with it would be in some form of a, an auction process or a bid process so that everyone would have equal opportunity to bid for the property. Uh, so basically we've put together an invitation for bid, um, and listed the properties that we would be talking about, uh, putting on the um, uh, out for bid in our first um, round of, of this, and they're listed in the memo that you have. And um, then the R F, well, the invitation to bid follows. Uh, so we'd basically be advertising it, giving everyone until July twenty-six to submit a bid. And then you would consider the bid and award the bids at your August, the first August meeting when you meet. Which was the most fair way we thought of coming up with it. So people can make their own decision. They'll have that much time to look at the property, decide what they want to do with it, um, what they're willing to bid for it, and then high bid. And we, we, and we do reserve the right to reject all bids. If the bid comes in too low, all the bids are too low, then we reserve the right to reject them.
Any comments from the commission?
Let's move forward.
I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Bourne, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion on the motion? Questions called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. For sake of time, we're going to push any reports. I don't think we have many of our folks in here. You got anything um, today? So we are going to push our reports and we're going to our next, our CRA meeting. That's next. So I want to, we're at, we're five minutes late for our CRA meeting. I want to make sure that we get started on time. So if there's nothing else at this point, we will stand in adjournment. So we will adjourn this meeting at five oh five. And we will take a quick recess so that we can start our CRA meeting. Five minutes, we'll be back.
Hi, my name is Jody Henson. I actually reside in Nassau County. And I'm here with the Florida SBDC, and I'm here to say hello. We haven't seen us for a few months, a couple of months, but we are now back. I'm here to introduce tonight our new Patnem County SBDC business consultant. Today is his first day on the job, and you are going to be seeing a lot more of him. So I wanted to introduce to the audience and to the commission, uh, Mr. Rick Paul. I'm very excited to have him.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Paul. Come aboard.
You have impact reports. I know you're used to getting those. Um, is this something we can pass around?
You can pass it around.
Um, we have a question we have to discuss offline and talk about the activity, but, um, we just wanted to make sure that we kept the data flowing.
Okay. We're fine.
Make sure we kept the information flowing, and if you have any questions, we're here to handle this.
So typically what we'll do is we'll have the report come out a few days prior to the meeting. You can disseminate it at that point. And if there are questions, um, we'll go over it, and you'll give a report which kind of highlights the, the important piece of the data.
Great.
Mr. Cussey, you want to meet with me?
Oh, gosh, those are, took the whole folder, man. I don't think you want somebody else's calendar.
I was looking, it looked a little weird, but.
There you go. Thank you. So that's really why we're here tonight, is to say hello and to introduce ourselves. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for anyone.
I would just, if you could, um, I'll give my cell number. You're all right, it down for you?
Say that out loud for the record.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, we'll do it. Commissioner, also make sure your mic is on.
It's on. Careful what you ask for.
If there's nothing else, again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
This is something she wants to share. Is, is it anything you would like to share in the report or anything? Kind of from a high level, maybe?
Well, the one thing I do want to point out on that report is that, if you'll notice, the reporting period is October through March. And I, I'm not sure if you understood, but when you look at some of the data that we pull, sometimes it's self-reported by our business owners. And then, and sometimes it's collected at the end of the year. So for example, when you look at new businesses started, there's just one, but by the end of December thirty-first, there will be a lot others that the business owners have actually reported in a survey that is sent out every year. So, um, while it doesn't look a lot, like there's a whole lot of business starts, chances are there are more than that. And as you all know, we're seeing a lot of business starts just out in the economy, which is a typically, uh, thing that happens with economic downturns. That's when entrepreneurship tends to flourish. And so we're seeing a lot of those. But you'll, you'll see those numbers change particularly after a, an official survey has been sent out in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our regular business, approval of the budget amendment for the projects at the transportation hub. Ms. Tucker? Okay, okay. And we'll give you an opportunity to, in the meeting to, if you want to go over anything and highlight it for us. Okay. Number five, one.
So, um, the approval of the budget amendment item is for the first phase of the improvements at the transportation hub. One million dollars of that is grant funding. Are there any questions?
Are you guys be rendering any, like visuals so that we can see the type of, uh, improvements you're gonna be doing?
Um, not at this time, but I'd be happy to bring them back to the next meeting. Or distribute them.
It'll be good to see. I'm a visual type person. So I would like to see, you know, what this money is going to be spent and how it's going to be spent. Just for future reference.
Shane, you have anything else you want to add to this?
Just to note for the record that typically whenever we bring these amendments and budget transfers to your attention, it is due to statute, um, statutory obligations that we have. So, um, that's why it's coming to you before in this presentation.
Any questions? Not entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion?
Question.
Question from Commissioner Jones.
In the land of property acquisition?
Yes, sir.
That was another question. Weird.
Um, that's one of the funds that the money will be moved from.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I kind of get.
Certainly, certainly. Okay, so the CRA lines that would have money moved from them to this project is landscaping in the amount of, and these are all central business district lines. Twenty-two thousand sixty-six dollars, wayfinding fifty-seven thousand three forty-seven, property acquisition thirty-five thousand, and then reserves would be a hundred thousand.
Can you might explain them briefly? I apologize, but just for the commission, permission, can you explain why you select those, those are?
Certainly, certainly yes. So there is a landscaping aspect to this project. There will be a gateway feature that will be started that will have landscaping as well as some spacing to eventually have a additional gateway features there. There'll also be new signage at the parking lot, and property acquisition is a line that has been in the budget. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Two years.
For at least about two years, and, um, it hasn't been used yet.
And that was the funding that was for the adjacent lot over at the hotel?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, so it's important to keep this project on schedule, and, um, it needs to start at the end of this month. So it's extremely time sensitive. It's not something that we can push and budget for next year.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none. I'll call a question now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number two, special events cost share application. Porch Fest.
Yes.
Let me, before I, let's go to Porch Fest, South Historic Neighborhood Association's applicant.
So we have a representative from the South Historic Neighborhood Association here with us today, Mr. Vito Russo. Um, the Porch Fest application is for a Class A event. Um, the total budget that was turned in is twenty-four thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars in expenses. No revenue money or no expected revenues were, um, were included in the submittal. And the cost share request is two thousand five hundred dollars.
Which is the, which is the max under the festivals?
That is correct.
Okay. And we're all familiar with Porch Fest, Ms. Kim? I'm sorry.
Cause the last, last time they came, I asked.
The, the grant program, um, does have stipulation in it. And correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody remembers differently, but for three years, they can ask for the maximum amount per their class level. The fourth year, the fourth year is at fifty percent, and after year five, they're no longer eligible.
And depending on what they do, they also become eligible for tourist development funds and some of the other things, based upon beds and heads and other criteria. Right. And so those are the things that are there. Any, at this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I second.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Board, but second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. It's probably the easiest time you had here, Mr. Russo, huh?
You coming with something then?
That means he'll be back.
He wants to buy a piece of property.
And next on the agenda is hurdle number two.
Yes, so we have Mr. Vito Russo from the South Historic Neighborhood Association. The organization requested an item on the agenda, and I'm just going to turn it over.
Vito Russo, four one five limit street, and, uh, I just want to say it's very good to see all of you. So thank you.
Good to be seen, huh?
Thank you for having me. Uh, I wanted to bring to the CRA board and to the city, uh, the, uh, beautiful idea. It's a public-private partnership in creating green space, passive recreational park out of a vacant lot, or it could be a blighted piece of property. So, uh, I just wanted to go through this PowerPoint, uh, relatively quickly, and I want to take up everybody's time. And give you the basic concept. But the one thing that I want to emphasize on this presentation is the fact that the funds that are being requested from this CRA TIF program is an investment. It's not a sunk cost. This, this, this investment is going to generate monies in addition to what the program is already generating to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, like two hundred plus thousand dollars. And I will be referencing four different university studies, uh, that basically say the same thing. An investment into green space into our neighborhoods will boost property values for a variety of reasons to the tune of eight to twenty percent. Now, boosting, doing anything that boosts property values by eight percent is incredible. If you're boosting property, if you're doing anything that's producing, that's impacting property values to the tune of three percent, that's substantial. But this is at a minimum of eight percent. So this is a worthwhile investment in our neighborhood. So the benefits of creating a park I've listed here. Variety of improving the standard of living and the quality of life and the culture of our, of our, of our neighborhoods and our city. So, next slide. So this is, this vacant lot is kitty corner to Hammock Hall, and it has been advertised for sale just recently. We would like to create a green space park out of that. So, next slide. So these are some of the ideas that we could use to develop the park. Now, the public-private partnership aspect of this is that we would like to see, the South Historic Neighborhood Association would like to see the city use the TIF funds to purchase the lot, and the neighborhood association will use its funds to develop the park and then to maintain the park, no cost to the city. So there's no burden on the city to, to, to create a recreational green space park. So these are some of the components that we could incorporate into the park. It's a, it's a really big lot. It's, you could do a number of things, uh, with this space. So, next slide. The Hammock Hall at the moment is being used extensively. We normally, the Hammock Hall is normally rented out four, five, six times a year. Up right now, we're not even halfway, and we've rented this thing out like eight times. So, um.
Making good money, huh?
Good money? I tell you, it takes.
Stay on task.
We're making a marginal amount of money on that.
Stay on task.
I'll say. So anyway, the one thing about the, uh, the park being adjacent to the hall is that it could work in conjunction with the folks that rent Hammock Hall. So, so it's a variety of reasons. So, next slide. So some people have said we've got too many parks
I said it.
in the city. And, um, I just wanted to make a point that there's, uh, one of the main things about Savannah's culture is the fact that it's got so many parks. So, next slide. Oglethorpe, who established Savannah and the colony of Georgia, basically just had the first city plan. And his reasons for creating these, uh, these, these, uh, public spaces, these many public spaces in the city was not for parks per se. He had, he had, um, other incentives to do it. But, uh, it has really added to the city's culture and, um, standard of living lifestyle. Next slide. You can see how many there are. Those green dots are parks. It's in a city. And, um, if we go to the next slide, you can see some of them. It just be, there's beautiful, just beautiful parks. So in Jacksonville also has quite a few city parks, small city parks. So we're not doing anything that anybody else is not doing. So, uh, getting into the economics of this, um, I did some research, and, uh, I tagged these four, uh, three universities here. And then, um, a nationwide organization that publishes the, uh, leisure research, journal of the research. So we get into the next slide, we can get into some of the economics of it. So, so what I did was I went to the finance director and, uh, found out how they calculated the TIF program. And I went home and I duplicated her numbers, so I knew I was doing it correctly. And then I basically boosted property values by eight percent. So in this particular slide, if you go to the red, the red box right there, the increased value of eight percent in neighborhood would increase the TIF program by eighty-four hundred dollars a year. Now that's being conservative at eight percent. Imagine if it was ten or twelve or fifteen. So, next slide. So you could ask, what is the best use of the property? Is it to create a park? Is it to, um, is it to build a house? I got ahold of, uh, Tim Parker, tax praiser. We went through a process of, of trying to determine what the tax benefit would be to the city if it was a two thousand square foot house at ninety dollars a square foot, which is today's number, way low. And basically, uh, Tim's, Tim's, um, estimate was that it was gonna, it would generate for the city's general fund through tax, well, actually for the TIF program, it would generate thousand, twelve hundred dollars, maybe fifteen hundred dollars a year. So if it was built, if we let it become a house, it would generate tax revenue to the TIF program and ultimately to the, to the city's general fund of maybe fifteen hundred. If we create a passive record. If we create a passive recreational park, have a minimum impact of eight percent, we're generating eighty-four hundred dollars. So on pure economic reasons, we would try to make the effort of creating a passive recreational park in not just our neighborhood, not just the south side neighborhood, but in all of our neighborhoods. So, next slide. I'm sorry?
Go back one slide, please. Because I see that one thousand dollars, I don't know how you get that one, but go ahead.
Okay, we can back up. So what's the question?
You said that the number that you got from Mr. Parker was roughly, how much?
A thousand, twelve hundred, maybe.
So if you build a green space, how are you making eighty-four?
The green space has an impact of increasing property values because it increases the livability, the desirability, the standard of living.
He multiplied.
He's saying on the entire south side.
He multiplied the entire TIF.
The entire south side.
By eight percent, to show you what eight percent of the entire, an eight percent increase in the entire TIF fund would be, that's eighty-four hundred dollars.
For a whole.
That was what he did. Yeah, that's what he did.
If you put, if you put a park there, he said.
For the south TIF district.
He's saying that's what the impact would be for the whole entire South Historic District if you would put a park there. That's what I'm understanding.
So what he did was he multiplied, he used the multiplier, he used eight percent to show you what eight percent of the TIF funding would be versus what his estimated cost of ninety dollars per square foot would be for a two thousand square foot house and now what the taxes and receive would be.
Yeah, so you have a comparison of what taxes, what property taxes we would derive from building a home, hundred eighty thousand dollar house versus having an eight percent boost in all property.
You're assuming you can build something for hundred eighty thousand dollars.
Historic home.
Not today. These are obviously dated numbers.
So, so if we can not get caught up on our building right now, can you move on, please?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can wrap it up. So basically, I think it's a, I think it's a no-brainer, so. I just wanted to, we like to, the property is for sale, so.
What is the cost of the property?
That was my next question. What's the price of the property?
Ninety-nine thousand.
What's the taking price?
For the lot? Just to recognize Miss Correa.
You asked the city to pay for it.
He's asking CRA.
I would not pay ninety-nine thousand dollars for that lot, obviously. I just wouldn't.
Miss Correa? Miss Correa?
No.
Just fill out, fill out your card for me. Fill out your card for me.
Well, this, 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 this original idea came from the idea that Mr. Swing owned the properties directly across the street from Hammock Hall. That deal was for twenty-five thousand dollars. That that property has sold. So the whole idea of the green space park was put on hold, parked, but then the property adjacent to Hammock Hall came up available. Now, they bought that property in twenty eighteen for thirty thousand dollars. The idea that they're asking ninety-nine thousand dollars a year, three years later, four years later, I find to be not acceptable. I wouldn't pay ninety-nine thousand for it or anything close to that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Russo.
If we could go to a higher level of the discussion, if you don't mind. I have concerns with this and the next two items for approximately the same reason. When we put together the CRA budget, we did not budget
For these items.
for these items. And I, we opened the floodgates when we said, yes, we're going to give five thousand dollars for the house on River Street, and we were going to give X amount for the next one that came in. And we're robbing from Peter to pay Paul because we don't have the money to start with. And, and we said that we would not budget money for these projects until we got the CRA plan in and we saw what the finalized plan was going to be. So supposedly, we have not been approving any of these types of projects and telling people no because we were waiting to get the plan in and then we were going to fold it into the next budget cycle so that we can start doing it. I'm afraid that this is, if we open the gates now, we're never going to get to that point. And I'm concerned about what it's going to do to the budget and all the projects that are already in the budget by moving forward with any additional projects.
Ms. Kemp, now, when you say project.
Let me recognize you first. Go ahead, Commissioner Board.
Oh, no, I mean, but my, my point was going to be back to some of the other things, but I let them finish.
Well, Ms. Kemp.
Hold on, Mr. Russo, let me recognize you.
Because I was going back to his original comment that he said that the city would purchase the property and the South Historic District would be paying for it. S H and A would pay, will pay for the maintenance and upkeep. That's what I heard.
Yeah, that's correct. We would develop the park, as I gave some samples, examples, and then we would maintain the park. It would be no cost to the city, and it would be an investment. The monies that we're asking is from the South TIF program, so we're not taking monies from any, any part of the city. This is, these are monies that has to be spent in south side. Now, we hired John Jones and his firm to develop the revised CRA plan. And it was very, as we all know, was very comprehensive. In that CRA plan, he told us we need more parks. That's what he said, very plain, very direct. And then he showed a map and the very property that we're trying, that I'm proposing that we try to buy, I'm not paying ninety-nine thousand for it. I wouldn't recommend the city do that, but he pointed out that particular lot to be created into a park.
But that, I mean, but that's the cost. My understanding from Ms. Correa, that that's a hundred thousand dollars that you'll want the city to pay, and then you want S H and A to maintain it going forward. Okay, so that was the one thing. And then you also mentioned that there's other cities like Jacksonville, Savannah, and all new which has a number of parks, and so do we. But we were trying to downsize on some of the number of parks that we have because we can't maintain what we have. And putting a house on a property that is not being utilized, well, I think served the city a little bit better. That's my opinion.
But, but.
You know, so you can't compare the city of Palacka with Jacksonville, Savannah, and those. And then we talking about the proximity of the parks. We have a lot of.
You mean to the two parks that are in the same district?
Right.
What parks are you referring to?
Like the riverfront park?
What, the Little Kitty Park and the riverfront?
Yeah, the one that's about twelve acres.
And the one just past, the one just past the, the railroad tracks heading up to. Right.
Oh, Hank Bryan Park.
Yeah, and then you got one, yeah, you got one just passed on railroad track. So that's all within the city of Palacka in a very close proximity to the S H and A.
That's true.
Right, so that was my, my point and my, my note that I was taking as you were going through your presentation. I thought that was.
Well, let me make one thing clear. I do not recommend the city pay ninety-nine thousand dollars for that lot. I just don't recommend that. I mean, unless that number becomes reasonable, then it's no deal. I wrote, I wrote the gentleman a letter, or the people who own it, there's more than one. And I basically conveyed, conveyed the idea that we would pay forty thousand dollars for that lot, or something close to that. And, and that we're asking them to basically appeal to their altruism, you know, but this is not just for us, but for the next generation and generations after that. Because the music festival does need that property, or a piece of property close to Hammock Hall. Because we have an opening act and we have a closing act this year, and we can't do it all at adjacent to Hammock Hall.
You got anything else in your presentation?
No, sir.
Okay, let me take the speaker at this time. Open the floor for public comment.
Roberta Correa, one eighteen Dodge, and as Mrs. Thomas posed it, I was disrespectful and spoke out. But any rate, the list price on the MLS is ninety-nine thousand for that price. And just to clarify, I'm not sure that will go that high, but property has been selling at a premium, particularly in the neighborhoods closest to the river, such as the South Historic District. And it's likely to still go quite a bit higher than forty-nine thousand, to be honest.
Thank you. Can you pass that card up for me, please? Mr. Russo, hold on a second. So we're, I'm not going to, if we got, if the agency has any further questions for you, we'll call you back.
Well, let me just end with, just emphasize one thing. One, I don't recommend that we spend ninety-nine thousand dollars unless that number gets very reasonable. And number two, it's an economic argument. It's a purely economic argument. What's the best use of the property?
We heard you. We heard you. You don't have to keep repeating it. We got you. At this time, we're going to close the floor. Public comment. Send any further comment from the agency. Any concerns? I'll say it. I'll put it out there. I'm the one who said that there are too many parks in the South Historic Neighborhood, in the neighborhood district. You've got Rotary Park, you've got the riverfront park, all, they're adjacent to the Neighborhood Association. And I don't think we need another park in that area, not just for one event. And at the end of the day, I think our resources, I think Ms. Kemp was directly on point, it relates to the use of resources for this particular event.
No, I, that is, that's my concern is that we will open the floodgate. One, I don't think it's appropriate because we don't have a finalized CRA plan. And two, we don't have the money. We just plain don't have the money budgeted to be able to take care of this, right? So, I mean, it wasn't, it was not contemplated in the budget when we put it together last year.
It's been requested before. It's been requested again, and it's a conversation. That's not a new conversation.
Right, it's not new, but we never funded it.
You're absolutely right. Any further comments from the commission?
I just say that I agree with Ms. Kemp. I think that we've got the plan that we're working on right now. I think we need to stay focused on that. If there is going to be any action taken in the south or north side of the district, I think we should have a long-term plan for that and not piecemeal this thing together. That's all.
Any other comments?
Well, I just, I think it's a, it's a good idea, but it, it doesn't fit in the plan. It has to be within the plan before the year starts. I mean, it has to be built into the plan. If it's not budgeted or planned, we can't spend funds on it. That's part of CRA, what I learned, you know, when I had my training or whatever. So we, and again, we got quite a few parks throughout the city, not just in that locale.
Is there a motion to this presentation at this time?
Oh, we're voting on the presentation? We're voting on?
We've got to vote whether we're going to fund or not fund. So there's.
Second.
Is that a motion to zero fund? There's a motion to zero fund, second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion?
No discussion. Of course. I think, I think we really should encourage the south side of the district to come up with an overall concept and a long-term plan, including funding, sources of revenue, and then come back to us. Because this sounds more like a public partnership than a public-private partnership.
Because it's one of those things that we hear from the south side of the story district, but I don't think it's the true echoes or the sentiments of the entire south side district. Because it was actually not long ago that I think Mr. Russo came to us about another property or the potential of buying a house or something like that. So I don't want us to just get into habit of happening, if something then happened, us moving forth with something else, just because it's available.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Moving the agenda. Now go to our rehab, commercial rehab rooms, applications.
So.
You can go through the first application.
Recruitment grant application was received for one fifteen North Second Street, Suite Two B. Mark Stanton CPA was the applicant. The amount requested was fifty thousand dollars. The review committee met in a notice meeting and came forward with the recommendation of a five thousand dollar award. The amount based on the shortages to, similar to what Mrs. Kemp said, the, this, you know, this program hasn't been budgeted. There's been awards. It takes away from other projects, and we're just at the bottom of the barrel. Money-wise.
Mr. Stanton, you want to come up?
I want to thank you for considering my grant application. You know, I, you know, I've been here a long time, and I've seen not much growth in the last thirty years. And here in the last couple of years, I've seen some exciting things happen here, and I want to be part of it. And so, you know, a couple of years ago, when Charlie started envision buying this property, I agreed I would move down there with him. Because I wanted to see downtown Palacka flourish. And so, you know, I'm even, you know, obviously, I want to make this work because I'm investing my own money in a building I don't own. So that's, so I'm making a commitment for downtown Palacka. And I'd like the participation of the CRA Fund to help me with this project. Certainly, five thousand dollars would be appreciated. You know, you could see that I'm spending much more than that. And, you know, I, it's, you know, many people ask me, why am I doing this at this point in my career? It is truly to help downtown Palacka. And so I would like your consideration for an additional amount above and beyond the five thousand, but anything y'all consider certainly is appreciated.
Will you share your concepts as well? Yeah, will you share those?
Sure. So if you walk in the front door of that property, the front entrance will be from from the riverside. And in there, there's all occupied this side, and Taylor Douglas is occupied that side, Taylor Douglas Realty. In the center, we're going to put a mural, four by eight, that represents the city of Palacka or historic part of Palacka. Just to shut it off and have some light factor. I've got tin ceilings, the old shop style tin ceilings. So I'm trying to make an impression. Keep as much, the hall break will still be exposed.
You also show it to the public?
Sure. I want to give credit to John Hodge for doing these drawings. Then inside, also there'll be a comfort room, which just kind of want to give you all some idea of what this park is. This is going to be quite an investment, but I wanted to look at. So this is comfort room. So once again, you know, I'm making a submitted investment, you know, in my part. And I know you've awarded more than this in the past. I'd like some consideration, but anything would be appreciated, I think.
And so one of the things that we, we share with the applicants is that the budget constraints have limited our ability to do, to really do certain things that we've done in the past as it relates to recruitment grant applications. And so we wanted to make sure that we shared that as well, just so that everyone would know. I think the biggest issue is what we've, what we have to spend as it relates to the transportation hub. And so that's a critical piece to what's in place. You know, our desire is to be able to, you know, to help every existing business that, that's in downtown, as well as the new ventures that are coming. But there's a limited pot of funding that's available. And what we wanted to do was, with our recommendation, and that committee consists of me, Mr. Holmes, and Ms. Tucker. And we wanted to make sure that, you know, we provided some level of funding for, for the project. We didn't know exactly where we would be from the transportation hub numbers, but we wanted to make sure we provided some level of funding. And so we wanted to bring it here as a recommendation for the agency to make, to have additional discussion as well. I know I've got Mr. Smith here who also wants to speak on this. You want to come forward at this time before we get started, and then we'll move into the agency discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the CRA. It's good to see you. It's good to be here. It feels like home. And I just wanted to be here in support of both of the applications tonight. And just to give you just a quick, brief history, I was first elected as mayor thirty-four years ago. And the first big project we started on was acquiring the one hundred block. It was owned by eight different individuals. They didn't like each other. There was, didn't seem to be any hope of this, that anything would ever happen there. And the city took a position that we felt like until we could put that together, that nothing would ever happen with that block. I've seen the demolition of the high-rise. I've seen. I've seen the demolition of the high-rise. I've seen a major rework of St. John's Avenue. All these things are building to where we are today, and so now we're starting to see some of the the benefits of those building blocks that were laid years ago. And so, I'm not going to question the dollar amount because I don't know your funding, and those are things you have to. But I do hope that this city, CJ, will continue to support and work with public-private relationships to continue to build that, because I think we are fully on some great things for this community. And I wanted to thank you for supporting that, and I will end with this, that. I take my grandkids down to the little playground there at the end of the street by the church. And when you look back north, you will not see a more beautiful city than what you see there. And this commission has been instrumental in that improvement to the riverfront and continuing to make improvements. So, I would encourage you and support, and I do support these applicants and what they're trying to do for our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments from the agency at this time? You've heard comments from the public.
Yeah, just, just a question. The one application was for 50,000. Is that the total cost, or is that, you know what you're asking for, or?
That's a fraction of his cost.
That's a fraction.
Yeah, the total cost of the project was going to be approximately.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
So, it's hundred and fifty thousand plus. He's actually, his contribution is $92,000 to the project, and that's not his total contribution.
But then, what the agency was saying, was it 50,000 or 5,000?
His, his request was 50,000. The recommendation that came from us, based upon what we knew from, from a budget standpoint, was 5,000. And it was conservative just because of where we were from a number standpoint. And so, that's why it was conservative. You know, if we felt like we had more, we would have given more. And that's just absolutely just the honest truth of where we were.
Okay.
I just have, I guess, some educational questions. Mr. Stanton is going to be renting the building. He doesn't own the building. Do we typically give out grants for renters? And I'm sure we do, but the question comes to my mind. I don't hope this happens, but if, if his business closes within the three years, four years, five years, who do we go back to to get the grant money from? And that's because you don't have a property to put against a lien. Would you go back to Mr. Douglas? Who would you go back to?
Great question.
Yeah, I think it's me. I think in the contract it says, you know, I have to repay some of the funds.
Yeah, but if, if you're not liquid, usually it goes against the property, right? So that if the property, you know, because, no, I'm not trying to hurt your interest.
But his estate, if, if that, let's say the case was there is an estate, we're not gonna try to.
Well, now, I wasn't gonna go so far as to say.
But that's from a hypothetical. Regardless, his agents or assigns would still be in that same position as it relates to what's in place. And that would be the way it is. You know, the risk are far less when you've got someone who's been in business.
Exactly.
For 115 years inside the city of Palatka.
So, so what I was actually leading up to is that I've heard rumblings, you know, being on St. John's, you hear stuff. I've heard rumblings from some of the other potential renters that if this goes through, they're going to come down as well. Not all of them have the longevity that Mr. Stanton has had, and once again, it's not something that we budgeted for. I don't wish you any well.
And I think, and I think in full candor of the discussions that we had as a committee, one of the things that we discussed is the fact that the floodgates per se could open. It's always a risk whenever we're doing certain things. I think the beauty of recruitment grants are that they are catalysts to getting people to invest into the areas.
No doubt.
I think the other side of it is experience creates additional knowledge of what's in place. So, we actually talked about the possibilities, future implications of, of actually creating limits as it relates to grants based upon certain financial investments that are made, or creating facade grants or something that gives us the ability to get more people funded at smaller levels.
And I think that's the issue.
And so, those are all things that I think this agency has to have conversation about as we move into the following budget year. But I, I think at the end of the day, when we look at what's in place now, we've been asking people to make significant investments into particularly our downtown district and our riverfront. And so, we're having those commitments being made, and many, and the majority of those are done with their own finances. And so, no differently than what we've done as business owners in the past. And I think that, you know, ultimately, where we want to be is, we want to make sure that happens, but we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater at the same time. And so, Mr. Stanton understands that. I think Ms. Correa understands it likewise. And so, that's where we are, and that's, and so these conversations are healthy as we move forward. You, you, the other two of you, you want to chime in either, either Mr. Holmes or Ms. Tucker, or did I sum it up? Okay. I just want to make sure. Any.
We will welcome you downtown. I've been down there quite a long, so I'm looking forward to having neighbors. Thank you.
Well, you know, when, when I look at the costs, or the percentage, I mean, it's 3%, it's 3% of what the total amount is, which is 152, 846. So, I think that is really insignificant to the investment in terms of what we will be doing to assist in that respect. And since he's been investing with us so long, I mean, that should be something that we need to consider, at least in my opinion.
He says 3%?
Yeah, I mean, you look at the amount that we're giving him, I mean, well, potentially may give him 5,000. His, his project is 152, 846. So, we, I mean, proportion to his investment, it's only 3% of what, what he's invested.
You want to make a motion on another amount?
So, I will make a motion to award the 5,000.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a motion to award 5,000 to Mr. Stanton. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Along the same lines, Commissioner Born pointed out. I think that's a drop in the bucket. I mean, Ms. Kemp, you, you want neighbors down there. You think that we could give a little more than 5,000?
My concern is that this was not anticipated in the budget. And to give him 5,000, to give anybody 5,000, no matter who's standing here, you're taking from another project or something else that's been earmarked for that 5,000. If, if it was within our power to give him the 50, I would be very happy for that. But this year, we said we would not be issuing any grants because we were going to wait for the CRA plan to be adopted. And we held off, and just as we said we would, until just a few months ago. And so, so we are where we are, right?
I, I, I just want to know from you.
Right.
Commissioner McCaskill. Was it possible?
Yeah, I was just, this was based on the committee recommendation, the $5,000, taking everything into consideration and the position that we're in financially. That's why I'm agreeing with the 5,000.
Any additional discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Stanton. We wish we could do a lot more. Next up, Ms. Correa.
Yes, a recruitment grant application in the amount of $25,000 for incentive amount for 715 St. John's Avenue. Roberta Correa is the applicant. She is here. And the committee met in a notice meeting and brings forward the recommendation of a $5,000 award due to budgetary constraints. 118 Dodge Street. This is going to be a little locally sourced food in grocery market, specialty market. I did purchase 715 St. John's, renovating it. Total to open, it's going to be approximately 250,000 when you add the cost of the building in. So, it's going to be an investment on my part. I've always felt, though, if I'm going to talk the talk, I need to walk the walk. So, I promote and encourage everybody to invest in Palatka, and I thought it was my time to do that. Just a minor correction, even though the CRA plan was being updated, the one program in the central business TIF that was left open was the recruitment grant. It wasn't closed. So, you didn't budget.
Limited. It wasn't budgeted.
I, it wasn't budget, I was, that was the rest of my statement. It wasn't budgeted as a line item, but it was left open for applicants. So, just saying that. But I appreciate anything as well. Obviously, anything is appreciated, and I will open regardless. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I think we've.
Again, I think this is another unique and another exception. I mean, in terms of, I mean, I read through some of the material and looking at the investment again. I think the amount of money that she has invested, again, is, is a drop in the bucket for what she's trying to do. And with the farmers market and, and other things, how, you know, we have a deficit of fresh fruit. And, and that would be a place where people, we can generate more foot traffic, things of that nature. And she also mentioned in there about not having a grocery store nowhere within, what, two to three miles, whatever, closest one, and maybe Publix or across the bridge or what have you. And again, there's another one that I think an exception can be made, and we're about at the end of the fiscal year anyway. So, I think making a sacrifice to help with this project, I think I would move forward with it. But I'd rather hear from the rest of the agents.
I share the same sentiment, and we don't have any further discussion. I'm ready to. Motion to accept committee's, committee's recommendation for the $5,000 for this project as well.
There's a motion to accept.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Campbell, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. So, I, I think, go ahead, Commissioner Jones. I'd like to speak first. Ms. Kemp. So, I, I think this is, I think this brings us to a very important point as we start to look at our thought processes for future endeavors. And I think one of the things that we've got to be conscious of is as we start to make certain moves, what the overall impact will be and, and what the caveats are. Because, again, when we created the opportunities for under recruitment grant process, you know, putting funding in place for the James Hotel, some of the other places, at the levels that we initially funded those projects, we set ourselves up for hardship. That's just the reality of what it was. And I think in an effort to try to create movement in downtown, we set ourselves up for hardship. And so, when people that we truly wanted to fund projects for came forward, there were limited resources available. And so, one of the things we need to look at going into this budget cycle for the CRA is where our priorities lay as it relates to business recruitment. How can we help the most folks around? Luckily, the two applicants are independently wealthy, and so they don't really care. But, but again, in, in jest, that's in jest, but I think the reality of it is this. We appreciate your commitment by all stretch and mend. I think we all feel horrible for not being able to do more under these circumstances because of so many unknown variables. You know, I think you look at it, you've got two, you've got two, you've got two folks on the dais, three folks on the dais, who have businesses in the central business district. Four who've had businesses in the central business district, who at all times, we, we were, we're excited about new businesses coming here. And we've all looked forward. You, you've been in business for decades here, and you've been committed to this community, and you're putting your money where your mouth is, and so are you, Ms. Correa. And those are commendable efforts, and we wish there was much more that could be done. And no matter how much we say it, we're kind of, we're left where we are, and I think part of it is planning. And so, there has to be a planning process, I think, that puts us in a greater position. What do they have an opportunity? Because I know they're both doing significant renovations. Depending on what we decide to do from a budgeting standpoint, they could always come back, and are they eligible to come back within a certain period of time?
We would have to get the city attorney to review the documents and make a ruling.
So, we'll look at eligibility requirements and some of the other things that are there, but also looking at ways in which SBDC may be able to help as well to provide additional resources, or if there are any other resources that are available to move forward. And so, those are all things that we'll do, and if there are some additional opportunities, we'll make sure that we communicate directly with you on what those are. And so, that's what we have at this point. That concludes our recruitment grants. We will, Northern Tiff's not here. Oh, and I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Kemp. I, she wrote, Ms. Kemp gave us a written report. I am for, for downtown, for downtown Palatka. And Ms. Kemp gave us a written report, which is very comprehensive of what's going on.
It will only get better. I have to say that the Isaiah Brewing Company has helped me out just a touch because, believe it or not, when some of the quilting ladies come in on Friday afternoons and Saturday afternoons and bring their husbands, that's where their husbands go while they're in the shop shopping, and it makes it easier for me and more profitable.
And then they go get their brew later.
Yeah, yeah. It works that way. Magnolias, I haven't heard anything about magnolias, but I can tell you that in my shop, we held a two-day event. I brought in 14 vendors from out of, out of state, New Hampshire, Georgia, and out of South Florida. And as a consequence, I had over 300 attendees during two days. Those 300 attendees made themselves known to the Isaiah Brewing Company, Mayor Chili, Subway's, Angels, and Corky Bell's. They did ask me for opportunities for retail shopping on Saturday, and I pointed them in the few directions that we had. So, I really would like some more retail shopping on St. John's Avenue. And I did it all wrong because I paid over $2,000 from my own advertising. I should have come here, I guess.
You couldn't.
I know. It's not fair. The pub, they're still doing construction, and we are waiting every day for Mr. Douglas to open up his law firm. Behind me in the Elks Building, Mr. Green is going gangbusters on construction and improvements to the property. We're excited that the James Hotel sold. I was afraid that it was going to sit vacant for a long period of time. The buildings on the 200 block by Ms. Burke are under consideration, and we hope there's movement there.
You're under contract.
There, yes, sir. And there, there was a apparel shop down across from Pizza Boys. The young lady was working really hard but just couldn't make it through COVID. She had to close her shop because of COVID, and Mr. Sharp moved in there with a shop called Needful Things, and he's selling books. Yeah, he's selling books and odds and ends. I've talked to Sam, and we're going to be coming to you to submit the applications for Boo on the Avenue, the Christmas Parade, and the Isaiah Festival for 2022. Some of the small businesses, including myself, are having difficulty in finding people to hire. Folks aren't real interested in coming to work right now.
Mr. Vickers is retired. He has nothing else to do.
Tell him, come on down. He can cut fabric. But so, I hope to bring you a more comprehensive report the next time we meet, but that's what I was able to put together for today.
Always good to see our mainstays. Mr. Vickers, how long have you been in business? Since what year?
There you go.
It's always good to have you here. We are, we're excited about the things going on in the city of Palatka. Commissioner McCaskill, got anything else for us?
No, I just want to thank everyone for the hard job they're doing. Congratulate Commissioner Born on his appointment for committee chair, as the committee chair for the transportation department.
And he's also serving on the nomination committee as a result.
Yeah, FPC.
So, let's give him a round of applause.
I just do what I can, you know. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Mr. Born.
All right. I want to thank Ms. Kemp for her fiscal responsibility and in terms of looking out for the budget. Because, I mean, that's right down my alley, making sure that things are proper and in place. But we just had a couple of exceptions in terms of why the, the, the. But we just had a couple of exceptions in terms of why the, the award in terms of, when you think about it, you had. We only gave out ten thousand dollars for two applicants for nearly four hundred thousand dollars investment. So I think that goes on to show that, hey, they made some major significant investments, and that's what we're trying to do to help grow our city. The other thing, I think your business is doing fairly well, you, you need to show somebody your blueprint because you, you're sitting out there on ninety-five, I see that big nice sign right there, that's not free. And you also got that big sign right there on seventeen coming over here from East Palacka.
I can tell you the sign on ninety-five brings at least five people a week or more to my store. When they come to my store, they visit the entirety of Palacka. I have people from North Carolina that are driving to Orlando, they see the sign, they come to my shop, that's what filters are crazy. They come to my shop, but they usually have multiple people with them, and they go to the restaurants, they walk around downtown, and they check out every, you know, whatever's available here in the town. So every week, at least five different groups of people come into my store off of ninety-five that I have never seen before.
I certainly thank you for your contributions and investment in the community as well. But the, going, going back to the James Hotel, we, we gave them fifty thousand, and I don't know if we actually transferred that money. And, and they just recently sold, so how does that work in terms of? That.
You can go ahead and tell.
The board was made by the board and ratified by the commission, the agreement was never signed. So it didn't happen.
Yeah, I'd like to watch, I'd like to watch how the money. So I'm, I'm a hound dog, I'm a track it.
It's part of that money reserves that you just sent over to the transportation hub.
All right, I just, I saw, I saw the sales, I knew we had an award, but if it's not transferred, I'm good with it. I'll turn my time back over to the rest of the commission.
Commissioner Jones.
I don't have anything.
Sure. Commissioner Campbell.
I too would like to congratulate Commissioner Born on his appointment. I once served on that board, and I hope it's a lot more functioning now that you, that you are the lead, the head of it. But definitely, congratulations.
Appreciate it.
And just for this commission as a whole, for going beyond the local level, and really doing our thing on the state level. That speaks volumes to the commitment that we have not only to this city, but to making sure that our voices are heard in higher places beyond right now. So definitely commendable for taking on that role, and that's about it.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, there's nothing else before the.